Okay, you ready?
Okay, we're ready to go.
Okay, hey, let's call the meeting to order. This is Monday, the seventh of February of 2022. We're meeting both live at the community center and virtually for those of us that have to. And this work session is a city manager candidate profile from Jensen Strategies. So I'd just like to turn over the program to them and let's see what we can find out. So Jensen, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor, and hello again to the council. And it's great to see everybody here online. Looking forward to getting down there and seeing you folks in person before too long. So I'd like to also introduce Amelia Wallace, associate with our firm. I think a number of you have talked with her already. And so we'll be walking through this presentation together. So the purpose of this work session is for us to present the candidate profile and the hiring procedures that you folks will need to adopt at the next regular council meeting. You should have received those in advance. So hopefully, everybody's had a chance to at least glance over them a little bit. So we want to go through those. We want to get your comments so that if we need to make any changes, that we can do that before the next session of the council. And then we also want to, at the end, talk about our salary recommendations to go along with the recruitment. So we'll do that at the very end. So in your packet, you have essentially, it's one document, but it's three pieces. One is a cover memo, if you will, or a cover statement with regard to what these documents represent. Then the position profile, which is Appendix A, and the hiring procedures, which is Appendix B. The position profile process that we went through to develop this was fairly comprehensive in the sense that we interviewed 12 people, six on the council, six staff members, department heads. We also did an online staff survey, and we had nine respondents to that survey. We also did an online community survey. And you folks, by the way, broke our record for the number of responses from the community. We had 58 responses. So your community is very involved, which is great to see. We also did hold an online virtual reception for the community for those who wanted to participate virtually in person. We had eight people participate. Two of those were staff members who were participating. So we took all that information and we used that to develop the profile that you have in front of you. Few points about the profile. The first is, it is something that you legally need to adopt under Oregon public meeting law in order for you to be able to hold executive session to talk about candidates, which is why we're putting, one of the reasons we're putting a strong emphasis on this document. The second is that the profile is the bellwether for criteria. We use the profile to set the criteria in evaluating the applications when they come in. We also use it in putting together evaluation criteria for interviews because we want to make sure that the profile is representative of what you're looking for in your next city manager. And by using that as our bellwether, if you will, for criteria, that allows us to stay in our lane in terms of making sure that we're getting the city manager that you're looking for. I also wanted to point out that, as you read through here, a number of you were interviewed and you offered up a number of different ideas and thoughts. And what we did is we took the nexus. We kind of thread the needle. And so you might not see the exact thing that you said or that you wanted, but we did our best to find that midpoint between what everybody was asking for. Also, with regard to some of the factual information that's contained in the profile, I'd like to point out that we rely on you folks, the council and staff, to give us that information. And so the information that's in there is based on the facts that were given to us. Then the last thing I'd like to point out is, before we get into the document, is that this is an aspirational document, if you will. If we find a candidate that checks every one of those boxes at 100%, you will be the first city that that's happened with, and we will be celebrating. What we're looking for is the candidate that's going to come the closest to being able to adhere to those attributes that you're looking for in the candidates, beyond, of course, the minimum qualifications. So with that, I'd like to turn this over to Amelia because Amelia is actually the person who did put this all together. And have her walk through it. And she's going to walk through the document. Then at the end, we'd like to get your comments and see whether or not we've hit the mark or not, or if we need to make some tweaks in order for it to meet with your approval. So with that, I'll turn it over to Amelia.
Thank you, Eric, I appreciate it. Okay, let me just get my windows set up to share. So first of all, speaking of corrections, I just want to take one second to confirm, everybody is working with the revised draft. We've already appreciated getting a couple of clarifications off from your team. So we just want to make sure. We sent out a summary of all the changes that were made, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to talk more. So everybody has the revised version? Great, okay, I saw at least a couple of head nods. Wonderful. So with that... All right. Can you all see the draft okay? All right, thank you. So to start us off, we have our required minimum education and experience. So you can think of this section as essentially the floor. This is the bar that we will eliminate applicants before the semifinalist selection point. And we heard from you all that, you know, there are a lot of combinations of competencies that could make a successful candidate. And in our experience, it's actually pretty helpful to keep this as a somewhat conservative range because you want to make sure you're able to consider all of the candidates that fit your city's needs. And this is a legally adopted document, so it's important to get those correct. For the preferred qualifications, though, the things that we heard about were that, you know, you are hoping for someone with, or an advanced degree in public administration would be really helpful or related field, including at least five years of increasingly responsible experience. For specific training, we heard that public finance, land use, union relations, those are all really important, as well as an understanding of Oregon, its budget law and its finance, specific land use policies. And then finally, perhaps the most consistent request of all in special trainings was ICMA. You all have been working very hard to incorporate ICMA's best practices into your city's work, and you feel it's important to have a manager that will continue that. So we put that in, as well as an option to give some extra consideration for accredited managers within the ICMA organization. And that is the International City County Management Association, in case the acronym isn't ringing any bells.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Great, so, sorry, did you have a comment, Mayor?
No, no, I just, absolutely, that ICMA, we worked very hard for the last eight or nine years to stay with that as, you know, best practices, best budgeting, and we've got awards for it.
Absolutely, yeah. And we heard that loud and clear. Great, so moving into the desired attributes. So starting off with leadership and management. In the city manager role, in almost every context, this requires a high level of skill in leadership and management. That's going to be to provide clear direction, balance of variety of department needs and priority initiatives. But more specifically, you all talked about how it's important this person utilize a management approach that values of practices, collaboration, transparency, empathy, and accountability. Of course, while being highly organized, approachable, and respectful of all viewpoints. We also already touched on union relations, but that's relevant here as well. Moving on to communication and the ability to work with all of the city's various facets, from council, staff, partners, constituents, this is essential. We heard loud and clear that building relationships is incredibly important, considering where Stateon is in its development. And you want someone with the communication abilities to effectively do this and not just facilitate, but really foment a lot of that partnership and meaningful, respectful civic dialogue. Next, you all have a number of public infrastructure, as well as facilities projects underway that you expect the next city manager to be prepared to continue and successfully implement. So you're going to need someone who's knowledgeable with the management of these projects, as well as financing, and able to facilitate that smooth implementation process. Here again, we come to relationships and being able to craft effective agreements with intergovernmental partners, as well as engaging the community. Moving into public finance, this also came up often. We understand that you're hoping to find someone who can really take that organization-wide view of your city and strategically integrate financial planning into your city's long-term goals and working towards those. Oregon experience comes up here, too, related to the budget laws and requirements knowledge. The next section, you'll notice a theme with relationships, intergovernmental relationships. This is important for a lot of cities, but specifically for you all, we understand that you're looking to build new, as well as expand existing relationships, to build those effective agreements with other local governments, the county, the state, and other agencies to manage your ongoing projects, particularly through crafting cost-effective and clear agreements and using proactive communication. We heard that in a lot of different ways. Next, community development. The next manager, it will be important for them to have skills in this area as well in order to help Stateon facilitate successful long-term planning initiatives, to build local economies, plan for growth, and really maintain those long-term quality-of-life goals that you all have. Here, land use and familiarity with Oregon is helpful as well, in addition to smart growth principles familiarity. So that's another one that we thought was important to make sure was represented. Next, moving into council relations. Go ahead and scroll since we're getting towards the bottom here. So in council relations, this is another centrally important area for all managers. And specifically, we heard it's important for the next manager to be responsive, accessible, and inclusive in their support of the city council's work. It's the manager's responsibility, of course, to be aware of all the city's legal obligations, but this role also includes facilitating effective and informed decision-making processes, really helping to support council's ability to not just be responsive to community needs, but really be those strategic leaders who are looking long-term. And also, ability to provide ongoing opportunities for learning and generally contributing to fostering an environment that is team-oriented and promotes effective governance is going to be important as well. Next, looking at community engagements. We heard that, you know, the citizens of Stateon, they want to be engaged and informed of the city's activities. To do this, you all expect a city manager to be accessible, open-minded, a listener, and particularly to employ an even-handed approach to all the differing views and opinions that exist in city worlds and trying to chart the best path forward. So of course, they should uphold the principles of transparency and inclusion, but on an individual level. The city manager should be visible in the community and use these opportunities to proactively communicate and engage with the community. Next, and very related, this lends to it pretty perfectly. It's really important that the next city manager appreciates your community. We heard a lot about how proud you are of everything you have going on and the town's agricultural heritage, and it's important that the next city manager appreciate these qualities and, as I mentioned before, be a visible part of the community. And then finally, for our last couple of sections, so you have a number of transportation infrastructure projects underway, which we'll hear about shortly, that it's important that the next city manager has the skills to address, including more intergovernmental collaboration and negotiation skills that will be important, funding as well. But then you also need a manager with public safety planning and communication skills in order to effectively navigate upcoming decisions and increase communication with the public about public safety issues and the decisions coming down the line. And then lastly, in our attributes section, we have understanding of city government roles. You can't get around needing this. It is absolutely essential for a city manager to be adept at ensuring and facilitating city council, staff, and all the advisory bodies' ability to operate effectively in their roles and legally, of course. So those are attributes. Next, I will move into our policy directives. So these are the issues that, when the next city manager walks in the door, you need them prepared to take these on and continue without a hitch, so to speak. So the first one is facilities planning, which you all have a lot of facilities and a lot of decisions and work that needs to be done around just a variety. So we felt this was highly important. So this relates to both department office spaces, as well as community facilities planning. And I will skip over more of the details in this section because you all likely know a lot of this. But I'm happy to revisit anything you all have questions about. So as I was saying, this relates to department office planning, as well as community facilities, and particularly within all of those different projects that need to be managed and decisions that need to be made, public communication is especially important to build consensus and make sure you're moving in the right direction. In the next section, you also have a number of waste water and infrastructure improvement projects underway. These are all going to require a knowledgeable manager, someone who's able to, you know, lead these projects effectively and strategically manage them while finding creative solutions to address not only financing the needed projects, but also addressing water revenue fund shortages that have occurred as a result of losing an important economic center. And managing, I've neglected to mention managing ARPA and CARES Act funding, so navigating some tricky legal boundaries as well. Next, we have long-term planning for growth. So you all are not, you know, experiencing explosive growth, but it's steady and it's very present. And you all want to be able to guide that growth and not just let it happen to you. So that involves making sure that you're planning for Stateon's future and its livability. And specifically, the city has been doing this by engaging in a number of master planning initiatives, as well as meeting to, as well as a number of housing and economic development projects to support this work, planning to bring those together, and ultimately ensure that you're growing in the way that your city wants to. So again, this is another area where public communication will be important, managing public perceptions of growth, as well as the other planning elements that go along with long-term planning, including city staffing levels and strategic financial planning. Finally, another commonly mentioned area was streets improvement. And while there's clearly a lot going on in this area, the next city manager, it'll be important for them to continue these efforts and to continue working with the public to make sure that they are getting all the information that they need about these projects. So particularly, we mentioned the Shaft and Golf Club Road roundabout, that it will be particularly important for the city manager to provide some intergovernmental relationship building, to facilitate good agreements around, and work to communicate better with the public about the next steps of the project. So with that, with everything I just presented for you in a firehose fashion, I'd like to take a moment to see if you have any comments, any concerns, questions that you'd like to discuss about the current draft. And it looks like we have a hand raised. Lance, you're going to go ahead?
Yeah, hi, thanks very much, Amelia. I really appreciate this. I like what you guys have done. And I did, I've reviewed it already and I've edited some and sent it back to you. There's one area that I do have some concern with, and the reason being is that I think the city was stuck in an area of no growth. And what I would like, my personal preference is, is I think your minimum qualifications, the very top, I think they're a bit lacking. In my mind, a bachelor's degree and three years of relative experience does not even come close to trying to address what your scope is down below. I've been in the business of professional civil engineer for 27 to 30 years, and some of these things I am still learning. There's no way a person with three years of government is going to be able to even start to understand the complexities of what we're asking down below. So in my mind, I think that minimum qualifications should be looking closer to five to seven years of experience as a department head or senior-level position in government. I think you have to understand, I know you guys, this is your business, but this is our CEO, okay? This is our chief, this is who's representing the city on behalf of the city. And they're going to be out there trying to coordinate and come up with funds to fund some of our projects, to get partners involved, to develop our industrial basin. A person with three years is not going to have that capacity. And it's just the way it is. I understand where you're coming from. You want to cast a wide net and try to get as many people as you can in. I'm just saying, in my mind, I think you're underselling Stateon. I think we need to have, we need to have more of a minimum qualifications. We're looking for a CEO who can lead us into the next 25 years, not someone that's going to come in and learn the system and then be out of here in five years because we taught them how they're supposed to do things. And that's just my, that's just my opinion. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
If I could just respond to that, Lance? So one of the things we'd like to point out is that, yeah, that is a minimum. And we will go whatever direction that the council would like us to go on this. The reason that that is so, as low as it is, and by the way, when we say upper-level management experience, we mean department head or above. So if they're, you know, a supervisor in another department, that doesn't count. But the other reason that this is where it is is we're experiencing a very tough market right now. And we want to make sure that we are casting the net wide and that we don't cut people out necessarily. But hopefully, as you point out, we're going to get some stronger candidates. So we'll talk about what we can do to help you get there. But again, we'll go whatever direction that the council wants to go on this.
So Jeff, real quick follow-up on that. And so I don't do hiring of city managers, obviously. I have someone very close to me that does hire for CEOs and things like that. But it's been my experience, just hiring lower level. If you put a minimum qualifications out there, you're going to get people with less qualifications applying for that job. So it seems to me that you're going to be, you know, deciphering and going through a lot of resumes that will not even come close to fitting what we're looking for. Myself, that's just my opinion now. You know, I'll let others speak, but it seems to me that we're looking for someone that's got a little bit more experience than minimum qualifications. I like what you did with the preferred. I think that masters in public administration, I think that's outstanding, or public policy, that's outstanding. I still think that probably needs to be bumped up a little bit with experience because we want someone to come in here, especially now that we've got an assistant city manager, that's supposed to be taking some of those roles and duties away. We need someone to come in here and go down to the legislature and demand for, and look for some money for the projects we are, not someone that's going to spread the wealth around with the city manager duties with the assistant city manager. We need someone to go out and represent us and go get money and funding for us. And I'll leave it with that. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir, somebody else?
Sorry, Councilor Quigley. If I can have a second?
Yes.
I tend to agree with Lance. I have some notes here when I was looking when the presentation was being given. And I also had on the first line there, on the minimum for three years, I had five to eight. And then the preferred education experience, I had the same thing, another five to eight years. So to Lance's point, the umbrella aspect of it. So we're going to have an individual that really is going to be the chief executive officer of the city. And in my mind, that role is to really lead the organization completely as a whole and have individual higher efforts, if you will. To Lance's point about fundraising, the relationship aspect of it, in my mind, the relationship aspect of it really is going to make or break that position. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Would the council be interested for us just to change that from three to five? And then we can, we can change the five below to eight?
I'd be in favor of that, this is Councilor Patty.
Yeah, let me add a comment. This is Mayor Porter. I'd like to see maybe a slight revision where, as you cast the net widely, you're looking for someone from a city, a city about our size. A small city of 2,000 or 3,000 people probably isn't going to experience the same situations that we are, the growth situation, transportation. And I'd like to see someone that's had, I guess, a wider experience than some of the candidates you're likely to draw from. That's just my thought.
Okay. So going back to the... Okay. Um, so uh going, going back to the uh the five years and the eight years um that's been proposed. Uh, any other thoughts about that?
Eric, this is uh Dan Fleishman, the planning director. Um, in the room, but off the screen, it 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 looks like. Um, I wanted to also voice the opinion of the same thing about someone with more education and more experience. I think going to five and and I'm not quite sure about eight if if we're look, if we're looking at somebody with a masters and five years of, as you've worded it here, increasingly responsible experience, I think probably would be satisfactory. One of my thoughts was, um, I know you must have your templates of how you typically lay this out, but but rather than putting the minimum uh at the top of the page, followed by the preferred to lead off with, here's, here's what we want of preferred education and experience, uh also saying we'd be willing to accept someone without a masters with more experience. And and then in the second paragraph, say, here's our bottom line.
Right. So um, thank you very much, David. Uh, and again, gi- given that this is a a council adopted document, um, appreciate hearing from the council uh as well. All right, I, I, what I'm gonna propose to do unless we hear anything differently is that we will switch it uh to five years of upper level government management experience and under preferred, eight years of increasingly responsible experience. Um, the one thing I would like to point out, though, is that once we set this minimum standard, anybody who falls below that legally, we're going to uh take out of the mix. And uh we draw a hard line on the, on the minimum requirement. So just know that going, going forward.
So I have a question about that. Just um with the market the way it is, is that gonna make it more difficult for us to get um candidates? Because we're kind of, there, I know there's a lot of movement going on out there and we're kind of in the middle city. Because I'm not so sure that the the experience should be so high if there's a mix of education as well. So what's our, what does that do, do you think, for our applicant pool as we keep it that high?
Well, first of all, typically, um, our clients uh will go with either three or five. Um, so the five is the, is the upper uh that we normally do. So um, I I feel pretty comfortable with that uh moving forward. I wouldn't be comfortable moving higher than that. Um, but Susanna, the uh the implication will be that if there is anybody that is reading this, that is seeing this as um uh geez, I I don't have five years, I've got four and a half. Um, and but they've, but they've had a, a um very reputable uh rise in their, in their um career and would be qualified otherwise, you could lose a person like that.
Okay, thank you. I just want that.
I was gonna ask uh the same as Lance, if we could raise the minimum to five. So I feel so pretty comfortable with you guys drawing a hard line. I think that's what a minimum means, right?
Yes, it is. We we will not consider any applications that come in that do not meet the minimum. We don't even rate them.
You know, Eric, here's one last thing before, and I'll, I think um personally, if a person doesn't have five years, I'm not sure regardless, they they wouldn't be able to meet the qualifications below that you've listed. That's my point. I mean, if you, if you wanna take some of those desired skills and attributes out of there, I can assure you that a person with three years of experience is not gonna meet those. And they're not even gonna come close. Um, but that's the reason I brought it up.
Yeah. Uh, Lance, I fully understand where you're coming from and and we're happy to make the change. So um, so uh uh unless uh folks have a different opinion uh about uh that change, I would suggest that uh we move on with any other comments that you have.
My only suggestion would be to, it it depends on the, for the, for the time goes, on the required experience, yeah, the five years is fine. I think on the preferred thing, to Lance's point about someone that only has four and a half years, we can, I mean, that's a preferred quality. It's not necessarily hard. So you wouldn't pass on that person if they only had four and a half years.
Technically, if they are in the minimum, if that was a minimum requirement,
Correct.
we would, we would pass on.
Yeah, on the, on the minimum. I'm talking about the preferred.
Oh, on, on the preferred, no.
Right. So I think if, to the point where changing it to five years, I'm okay with that on the, on the minimum requirements. The preferred is obviously a little bit more open to uh experience.
Do you have a proposal for uh changing that or is eight okay?
Oh, I I was, my notes were just eight, five to eight as a general comment. It wasn't set in stone as far as eight being the number. I'm I'm totally fine with five or less for the preferred. I don't, we don't, I wouldn't even have to put a number on it if you want to.
Okay.
To Dan's point.
Well, uh, uh, the preferred is is a much softer, if you will, uh evaluation. And so we've got a lot more leeway on the preferred. So I I think if you have eight, that's fine. It's just, it it's preferred. But if you have seven, that's not gonna take somebody out. Okay, and.
So I I'm sorry, Eric, real quick, sorry to bother you again. But I'm reading what your edit was and it says at least eight years of increasingly, and that's what the the masters of public administration, I I believe what we are saying is a minimum of five to eight. So the five years on the preferred is really what we are after. Um, I think Brian said five to eight. Um, but I think um the the masters of public administration with at least five years increasingly experience. I believe that was what we were getting after. I won't speak for Brian, but maybe I misunderstood him.
So you were hoping for a range of five to eight in the preferred, is that correct?
That was my notes, but again, I think five is substantial. I think five would be sufficient. I just don't wanna get at the point where we're gonna, under the preferred, we're gonna discount somebody because they don't have that five years plus. That's all I'm getting at.
Okay, uh, well, we could put uh more than five years. How's that?
It's up to the rest of the council.
Yeah.
Counselor, uh, Orange, it just looks like you're trying to speak, but we can't hear you. Okay. No, we can't. I'm sorry. Uh, I heard something.
Did you? Can you hear me?
There we go.
Okay, I am. Okay, uh, I'm sorry, I had to step out of the room, but I just wanna, I think we're having some miscommunication. So another required minimum education and experience, that is like the bare minimum. That's what we're saying. This is where you have to meet in order to even be um, to even, yeah, to even be considered. And then, and our preferred, we would like you to have these things, but if you don't have them, we can maybe work with your experience. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that we're all, I I, what I'm hearing people say is we're not all on the same page about the five years of upper, upper level local government management experience. I like that. Excuse me, to have that, to have it the minimum of five years. But it sounds like we might be wavering, some of us, on that five years.
Well, you know, I, again, I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't put too heavy a weight on this particular edit because there's a lot of leeway in there. Um, the main thing that you're gonna be looking for is just uh whether or not you want us to give extra points uh if somebody, if if somebody has that much experience.
No, but you're saying that the five years is the minimum. If they have four and a half years of experience, they're not gonna be considered at all. But if they only have five years of experience and they don't have eight, they're still gonna be, they're still gonna be considered.
Yes.
But somebody, but somebody who has eight years gets weighted a little bit more, is what you're saying, than somebody that has five years.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm understanding it. I just wanna make sure that other, that everyone else is on the same page. That's all.
Appreciate the clarification.
Yeah, and as, as written, is, if this is uh appropriate uh based on the conversation that we've had or or not, please let us know.
Okay, um, it looks like we may have uh hit the sweet spot on this one. Um, other comments? Everything else look fine?
This is Dan again. Uh, I had one minor editing on um the discussion on page four of the water and wastewater improvements. You've, I've gotta find it here. You've included reference to reducing inflow and infiltration in the same sentence, talking about water improvements where inflow and infiltration is a wastewater issue, which is addressed in the next sentence.
We can move that clause.
We'll fix that.
Reorganize. Yeah.
That's an easy fix for us. Okay. Thank you for pointing that out, Counselor.
You got a promotion, Dan.
Yeah. Oh, thanks, but no thanks.
The, the window with the state and city council lit up when you were talking, so.
Who wouldn't want your job either, Dan?
All right. All right, other uh, other comments?
Um, I have one more comment, Councilor Quigley. Um, I just had um a thought about and the recruitment to make sure that the uh position itself is uh referenced to the the position in our charter. Is that something you guys would do? Consider? I believe the city, city manager, the city manager role, I believe, is defined in our charter. Is it, Alyssa? I don't remember off the top of my head.
It's in the charter and the code. So it's loosely defined in the charter, but then there's a little bit more detail in the code.
Just wanna make sure it gives some more familiarity with the organization and how we're structured. That's all.
We, when we advertise the position, we will actually also utilize a recruitment brochure that has a lot of information about the city, the department structures, the position itself and the, and the powers and the the governing structure. So uh we, we plan to address that and and we'll um have that in the, the advertisement of the position.
Uh, yeah, I have one more and I, I have one more and I'm just throwing it out there. Um, I I would like to uh just get some, personally, I'd like to hear from others, uh maybe on council and or uh from the uh city staff. Um, I know you have NORPAK in there and I know currently NORPAK is under contract and people are doing their due diligence. I'm not really sure we wanna talk about NORPAK so much in there because we don't wanna put ourselves in a position that we're gonna scare someone away from buying it because we want someone to purchase the building. So I'm not even sure if we should really discuss that. Maybe um we can talk about uh a generic term for NORPAK. We recently had a business leave that takes out, you know, whatever percent of water uh funds. I don't know if we wanna put NORPAK in there. Um, that building is, is under contract and they're going through due diligence. And so that's confidential information and I don't, I I really don't wanna get out there. But personally, I don't know if NORPAK should, the name, the, the company NORPAK is no longer even NORPAK. Um, for one, uh if we should even be discussing it in this recruiting. That's just my thought and I I'd be interested to see what the city council, the mayor and other um staff think.
Yeah, I I certainly agree with that. Go ahead, folks.
Yeah, this is Councilor Patty, real quick, Mayor. I, I think I brought that up in my interview, to be honest with you. And I'm happy just labeling it something generic, um, just that it is a city challenge.
And just to be clear, that came up in a variety of contexts, but we're happy to refer to it whatever is as most effective for you all.
Okay, well, we can remove that reference. It sounds, it sounds like that is something you prefer to do. Okay. All right, we'll make that change. All right, so we, we've got uh more to cover here and so I, I don't wanna belabor this if you folks are okay with uh where it is. Um, any other comments? We need to talk about the hiring process, which will go fast, but then we need to talk salary.
Let's, let's move ahead with it then. Eric?
All right, uh, we will take those comments, run with it. We'll make those changes. They'll be ready uh for the council meeting coming up. And um, so uh now, just to quickly go through the hiring procedures review. And um, I don't have it up on my screen, so I'm gonna um just talk through it real quick. You've already seen the hiring procedures in our proposal. This is essentially what we, we propose to do. You'll note in the hiring procedures that there's two parts to it. There is the advertising part, um, which includes um, which includes the advertising that we do, the brochure, getting it out to a variety of sources. Um, but it also includes us uh proactively doing outreach to potential candidates um that we know or that we've identified. And um, so we, we take that extra step there. Um, the second part is the screening and that's from the time that the applications come in. Um, and the applications, uh, once they're in, we will rate them uh according to the uh uh according to the criteria that you've set here. Uh, and we will conduct uh preliminary Zoom interviews with uh up to ten uh semifinalist candidates to see whether or not the uh what's on paper matches what uh we, we are seeing on Zoom at least. Um, subsequent to that, uh, we will be coming back to the council in an executive session and we will be sharing with you the um, the ten candidates that we interviewed. And uh, we will uh download information about uh about what we learned with regard, and you'll see, you'll see all their written application materials. Um, you'll also see any internet research that we've done. And uh at that point in that executive session, our hope would be that you would select up to four finalists to move forward. And uh at that point, uh, assuming that the four finalists all agree to go public, um, there's a public announcement from the city on, on the finalists and we begin the process of doing background checks on all four uh as well as reference checks. And the reference checks, we do, um, we ask for four references, a, an elected official that they uh have supported, a subordinate who reported directly to them and two other professional references. Um, in addition to that, we also uh do our own reference calls with people that we know uh in the industry uh to be able to get a little more information. Then we move on and we do the finalist week. And um, the finalist week incorporates four days. Usually it's the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of the week. Uh, on the Tuesday, we will do uh Zoom receptions, uh one with the staff in the afternoon and one with the community with the finalists. And uh the ability we have with Zoom is we can do breakout groups, so everybody gets circulated. Everybody gets one on, or group time with uh each of the candidates individually. Um, and uh then we have a survey that we uh pass out or that we send out uh to everybody who's participated to give their feedback on how uh well they feel that the candidates are a fit for state. Um, next, uh, on the Wednesday, we have panel interviews. The panel interviews are usually a group of community leaders. Uh, it includes a group of local uh public administrators, other city managers. It includes a group of local public administrators, other city managers or county managers, or special district managers near your area. And then the third panel are, are department heads. And so we will run all four candidates in-person interviews through the three panels. And that'll be that day, and we will be getting information from each of the panels with regard to their impressions. The third day on Thursday is the day that the city council does its interviews. The interviews are longer than the panel interviews. And so each candidate will interview with the city council, and that takes most of Thursday. Then on Friday, we have the council deliberations. And council deliberations are usually organized so that the first part of it is to get impressions from council from the interviews the day before. The second part is a download of a plethora of information. So we will give you information about the background checks, the reference checks. We will also have written summaries of the, what came out of the surveys from the receptions, and written summaries of the panel interviews and the impressions that the panels had. Once we've downloaded that, then we will facilitate a discussion with council and see if we can get to a preferred candidate that you would like to make an offer to. So that's, in a nutshell, the hiring process going forward. I would add, though, that the council's interaction with candidates is not limited to the Thursday, but rather, we encourage council to go to the community reception where the candidates are, to observe the candidates in that setting. So you get a chance to see how they interact with your community. So you'll have that opportunity as well. So with that, again, this is what we proposed when we sent in our proposal, so I'm really just repeating that and reiterating what we're gonna do. Any questions? I don't see any, so I'm gonna move on. Thank you very much for listening to that. Okay, so the, the next thing I'd like to talk about is the salary recommendations. And so the thing that we look for when we're making a recommendation for a salary range is we're looking for what's, what's a fair compensation for, to attract the type of candidate that you want that's a, that's a fit for state. And has the core skills and experience to be a city manager and has the experience to achieve the heavy lifts that you have outlined for them. And the other important thing is that you're being competitive in your salary to attract those people, and that's what we're gonna talk about. So as we were going through this, we typically start off with a study that was done by LLC in 2018 of salaries on a variety of positions, but also with city managers. And then we also look at a variety of other sources that we have available to us in terms of what people are currently being paid in the city manager roles. So I'd like to just, I'm gonna see if I can do the share screen here. And here we go. Does that work? Okay. All right. So what you, what you see here in front of you initially is the LLC salary survey report. Now that was done in 2018. At that, so the, the salaries are 2018, so we've, we've done the inflation calculator to say, okay, how much is that going to be in 2022? So the average city manager salary back then was 113,000 and change, and that's now 126 with inflation. Cities that are in the population range of 3,100 to 10,000 population, about 113 back then, and inflated for 2022 is 125 and change. Cities in the Willamette Valley, according to that report, were averaging at that time 122,000 and change, and that inflates to 136,000 today's dollars. The next.
Question, quick. Is that cities in the Willamette Valley, is that that three to 10,000 population number still? As far as population goes?
No, that, that, no, that goes for the, for the whole Willamette Valley, which would, which would explain why it's a little, a little bit higher if you bring in some of the larger cities.
Like Albany, Salem, Eugene?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
You bet, Mayor, thank you. So the, the next thing we did is we did local comparisons of current city manager salaries in cities that are close to you, are similar size. We looked at from 7,000 to 11,000 population. Independence at 138,000. Malala at 144, Monmouth at 142, Scapuce at 130, and Silverton at 132. If you average out those salaries, you'd get to 137, 540.
Real quick, I have a question about this, if I could, Eric.
Of course.
Are these factoring in other things, aside from just salary numbers such as benefits and perks that, you know, there's a con, you know, for, for, for our ex-city manager, there was a number of perks and a vehicle allowance. Does this factor in, things like that?
It does not.
Okay, thank you.
You know, and that's one of the things that, you know, you'd have to go back and look at everybody's contract to figure out exactly what they, they had. So, but that's a, a good clarification question, I appreciate it.
Sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to point out, we had someone appear in the waiting room, and I'm not sure if everybody can see just because we're on share screen, so I just wanted to confirm. We should let them in.
No, not yet. That's someone for our regular council session, once we finish. And I let, I let her know, we're running a little long, so no worries.
Great, sorry about that, thank you.
Okay, so before I move on to our, our recommendation, I'd like to point something out. There is, there's been a transition in the last year in that there's been a lot of openings, it's been, it has become much more competitive in the city manager world. And what we're finding is the salaries are responding to that and moving upward. And so what we have been advising our clients is that you wanna get up to that range that's going to catch the attention of the people that you want. And so if, if you look at, at the averages here, I think it's a good starting point, but I think you should keep in mind that with the competition as stiff as it is, that you wanna be on the upper level, if you can, if you can afford to do so. Our experience is that when we get to the finalist round, in the last several recruitments that we've done this year, we have, there hasn't been one where we haven't had a finalist bow out because they were accepting a job someplace else. So we're trying to be as cognizant of that fact as possible. So with that, I'm gonna move to our recommendation. And we're recommending that you, that you land on a range that's 122,000 to 152,000. The 152,000 is close to, boy, they meet all the attributes, they've got great experience. This is, this is a person who's going to, who's got a great reputation and is ready to hit the ground running on all levels. 122 takes you to, to the person who is less experienced but has all the skill sets and the experience, but probably could use a few more stripes to move forward. So how we got there is we took this number, the average, and I went 15,000 above and 15,000 below. Because we like to have a $30,000 spread. So that's our recommendation, and happy to answer any questions. You do not have to make a decision on this in order to adopt the profile. It's not part of the profile adoption, but you will need to make a decision before we do the brochure and the advertising.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So we're, we're, um, range in the brochure?
Yeah, so the brochure, right, the, the range will be published in the brochure.
Okay.
Yeah. One of the first things our candidates look at. Any other questions? Susanna, were you raising your hand?
Oh, I do have another question. Are you gonna make any recommendations, and it doesn't have to be now, but on, like Counselor Patty was talking about, those other perks of the job? Or is that something that just happens in the negotiation phase?
That typically happens in, in the negotiation phase. We will put in a summary of your standard benefits in the brochure. Many candidates wanna know whether or not you're a PERS city and whether or not you pick up the 6% on the PERS and, and the other benefits that you, that you offer to all employees.
Okay.
Other questions?
Can I just say one thing, in my, on my, in my perspective? And I don't have anything to do with this, but in my perspective, if you're looking at a person that's bringing in more of the top range there, and he meets all those qual, they meet that, those qualifications, we should benefit that like tenfold from the lower range with the business they bring into our community, whether it be through development or through building our industrial area or getting us grants. I mean, that's what I'd be looking at when I'd be looking at this, this range here. And see what those kind of benefits, we think those benefits will bring us. And, and so they would have to show that experience with their resume that they have the experience to go about in getting those funds for our city and promoting our city, and this is what I've done with these other cities. I've brought these kind of businesses into our industrial base. I've brought this kind of development into the community. And those are dollars, those are tax dollars, and I think that we can't overlook that when you're, you're talking about a salary range. And that's just my, my opinion, my perspective.
Thank you. All right, any, any other comments? We can just leave this with you to, to think about. But like I said, we, we would like to know if this range is gonna work for you before we do the advertising. Mayor?
Okay, and Eric, you've got that, let's see, that recruitment brochure development, you wanna have that done or just started by the 14th of this month, next week?
The recruitment development? Okay, so you will be adopting the profile on, oops, I got the wrong, wrong calendar out, sorry.
I believe it's the 15th? Is it next? Basically, we, we start the, we try to begin drafting the recruitment profile in the recruitment brochure as early as possible, but it depends on when you all have legally adopted the profile. So if I remember correctly, we're expediting just a little bit and trying to get a head start, but we'll go full-fledged into recruitment brochure development and then be prepared to, to launch the position once the count, the full profile has been legally adopted.
So our next steps are, February 22nd, you adopt the profile, and we are scheduled to launch this February 28th, so it'll be out on the street from February 28th to March 25th, four weeks, which is pretty standard.
Okay, all right. Answers my question, thank you.
All right, well, that's all we've got, and, you know, we'll keep you informed via Alyssa along the way, and we'll, we'll work to keep this process as smooth as possible for everybody here. And I want you to know that we also treat all of our candidates with dignity and respect all the way through the process. We keep them informed. And we will endeavor to reflect the city as, as positive and attractive as, as we possibly can. And I don't think that's going to be hard, frankly.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, guys.
Amelia, is it Amelia?
Yes.
Thank you, Amelia. Anyone else, any other comments at this point?
Thank you, Jensen Strategies, appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
I, I agree. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. And I appreciate you guys putting up with me tonight. Thanks.
That is a little bit of a stretch, but that's okay.
Yeah, you're welcome, Liam.
All right, thanks, everybody. I am gonna end the stream here, Mayor.
Okay.
And get us set up for our next meeting.
Okay.
Real quick.